I'd like to call to order the April 19, 2006 meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission and ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record show that all members of the commission are present. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on, it was a special meeting, wasn't it? Held on April 5, 2006. Are there any changes, deletions, additions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move, Mr. Chair, to approve the special meeting, planning and zoning on April 5, 2006.
I have a second from Mr. Bay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have any disclosures of ex parte communications?
Mr. Chairman, just a lax. Mr. Chairman, I had some ex parte communication with Dustin Jones regarding the use permit being played a little record.
Thank you. Any other?
He didn't call me this time.
I have disclosed, I had an email from Ed Bolt regarding the Virginia Avenue and Temple Creek Parkway application pending tonight for the rezoning for the Wells Fargo Bank. And I've shared a copy of that email with you. It was a one-way conversation because I couldn't get back to him by the time he was due to leave town. We had asked a prior meeting that Economic Development to give us an update on what activities that they're working on. And Holly Childs is with us tonight, the Director of the Department. And Holly's got a PowerPoint presentation for us. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Apologize for the voice. It goes with the cold, unfortunately. Didn't want to cancel out tonight, though, because I did want to take this opportunity. I know we've been planning for a while to try to get together and for Economic Development to really work more closely, hopefully, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're highly dependent, obviously, upon one another, and I want to make sure that we keep that relationship strong and certainly do anything we can within our department to strengthen that as well. So I'm going to give just a brief presentation tonight and take any questions that you may have. And what I'd like to do is possibly set this up on, you know, maybe a quarterly basis or whatever the commission would like, so that we could do, you know, special topics and that kind of thing and make the commission more informed about what we're doing and certainly get your opinion and advice on the types of things you'd like to see us doing in Economic Development. Our mission in Economic Development, and again, this is going to be very general, recruitment enhancement and expansion are the three general tenants. Capital investment, recruitment, that's what people traditionally think about as Economic Development, trying to get new companies to locate our existing businesses. We have a business advocate in our office, Carrie Crafton, who works specifically with existing businesses on trying to help them with their expansion. And then lastly, we certainly have a lot of developable land here, as you well know, that we're working with the city on trying to figure out what's going to become of the future of Goodyear and trying to work with the developers on those opportunities. And I think it's really important, the last part of that, to create and sustain a balanced lifestyle. While we have a great lifestyle in Goodyear, I'm not sure that it's necessarily balanced quite like we would like to have it yet. We certainly need more workforce opportunities, and that's something we're working on. Our business goals, there are five. Marketing, which is the traditional, again, Economic Development charge that you think about attracting businesses, business recruitment. Foundations applies to highways, infrastructure, water and sewer projects, such as working with the Improvement District on McDowell Road. Redevelopment opportunities like the Litchfield Corridor and our existing business development, such as supporting Snyder's Handover and their expansion plans. If you have any questions on the way through to, please, I want to keep this pretty formal. Our guiding documents, that's just a list that we made of some of the documents that have gotten us to this point. I think the majority of our operating strategic plan comes from the Goodyear Employment Corridor Plan that was adopted in May 2003. We're really trying to look at the employment corridor as a new opportunity for Goodyear to gain employment for the residents. Current major employers, you probably know these as well or better than I do. Department of Corrections, Lockheed Martin, McLean. I'm sure that the commission's familiar with these companies and what they do, but those are our major employers for now. All of them, we do have contact with on a regular basis in our department and some support role with them. Population growth, this was a surprise to me coming here, that in 1980 we were a city of 3,500, then went to 35,000. But I think the bigger surprise is anticipating that 390,000 that will come in estimated 2030, according to MAG statistics. Targeting in Economic Development, because we have limited budgets and resources and staff, we certainly try to look at what areas make the most sense for Goodyear in terms of attracting new business. And we've identified eight. Of those eight, I would say we are primarily concentrated on four of those currently. Plastics and composites, certainly, as we look at alternative uses for the Rubbermaid facility. We've had a lot of contact with plastics and composites manufacturers. Aerospace, working with the Phoenix Goodyear Airport folks. Lufthansa and Oxford Aviation, as they've moved in to their facility there. Food and natural products, again, Snyder's, Poor Brothers, Southwest Specialty Foods, some of our food products companies that we've had and certainly trying to build on that. And then manufacturing and distribution, because we are looking at trying to diversify and include some more of the basic manufacturing and distribution types of jobs within our This map is from MAG, and you're not supposed to be able to read it, and obviously you cannot. It is the employment center map that shows how the employment centers, the darker purple areas have grown along the highways, which is no big surprise. And I think we're going to see more growth in employment center in Goodyear, but a lot of that is based on how we respond. Our response has been identifying as a city, which I think is a great testament to the city's planning, certainly, 4,000 acres of contiguous employment property that's known as the Employment Corridor. McDowell to the Gila River and then Litchfield to Bullard Wash. Centrepiece being the airport, adopted by the council back in 2003. And we've heard more than once, certainly a hot investment area by local industrial brokers. Industrial office brokers are really starting to see this area, particularly as we continue to look at infrastructure development and marketing opportunities for this area as a hot employment area. And this gives you, yes?
Holly, the brokers think that this area is hot. When will we start seeing dirt turned? Are we five years away in that 4,000 contiguous acres? Or are we two years away? Or where are we on some of that?
Yeah, I think you're seeing the dirt turn now. I mean, you've seen the Mary Advisory Partners, Andy Riediger's project that is on Van Buren. Cornwall Corporation has Crosspoint and Venita on Van Buren as well. So those are earlier projects within the Employment Corridor, but you're going to continue to see, you know, more development. And I would say within the next five years, there's going to be a lot of filled out. And it's a phased, it's certainly a phased approach. And as you all know, going through the process of planning and zoning and trying to get their development plans in place and certainly meet the city's standards of quality, I think it's going to be a couple of years before you see a lot developed, but you're seeing the early stages of that now. RDB's buildings that have been there, that were just built recently, the industrial condo flex sort of space, you're going to see more of that type of building.
On RDB's buildings, how leased out are they? Have they done, are they doing well?
They are doing well. They have, I would say about 75% is the last that I heard from them. They've had some turnover within RDB's operation itself, and I think they've had some setbacks recently on leasing space and have really tried a little bit of everything, as you know, for that space. I mean, we've gone everything from Kawasaki to churches to construction services to, you know, it's been kind of across the board. I think projects will continue to advance more and become more well-defined as we see them come online.
Thank you.
Additional projects. This, again, was an excerpt, and just to show you that, and I'm not even going to make you squint, that was from Voight Development. There was a press release back in August whenever they purchased the 300 acres from Sun MP right across from the Rubbermaid property just east across Cotton Lane. They purchased 300 acres that's now known as Cotton Lane Crossing, very important development for the city. Not within the 4,000 acres, but actually over there, you know, right beside the Rubbermaid facility, will be another pocket, I think, to watch for future industrial development. That property is served by rail, Union Pacific, and the line runs on the southern border of the property, Union Pacific. We've been in meetings with them over the past few months, and we have a preliminary development plan with an engineering firm. We've been working with Voight Development very closely on developing a rail-served industrial park there. There's nothing like that in the Phoenix Metro. So we've had a lot of interest from particularly plastics, composites, chemical-based companies that have been interested in having access to rail that previously has been unavailable, rail sites within the Phoenix Metro. We are upping our marketing efforts as well. The City of Goodyear website is great, it's just not that great for Economic Development. We're about the fourth tab back, I think, and 15 clicks away. So we're going to do a new standalone website for Economic Development, do more electronic marketing and media, and have a comprehensive marketing strategy that we're going to spend about $50,000 on this year alone for the Employment Corridor specifically, to try to work with the developers. They are banding together, a group of four of those developers, to try to work with us and certainly with Planning and Zoning on trying to create a real sense of place there. You know, that area has been compared, and is much larger too, but has been compared to the Scottsdale Air Park, and, you know, how we can look at trying to recreate some of the things that we want Goodyear to be known for and a really unique place for office and industrial employment. We've also strengthened our industrial, I'm sorry, our existing business program. As I said before, we have a business advocate on board now. She's been with us just a little over a year, and she concentrates on existing businesses. And I think it's very important that we don't lose sight of our existing businesses and what they mean to our economy while we're out looking for new business opportunities. Attainable workforce housing, again, this is just a graph that shows you, we went from 180 to 280 in terms of median home sales price. While that's great, if you're someone who bought a house a couple of years ago, it's not so great for people coming into the market. And I think that's going to be a real challenge for us, is finding that workforce housing. And I know you've had presentations, as has the City Council, on what to do about that. And density is certainly one of those things that I think we can do about that. Southeast corner of Interstate 10 and Estreaparkway, this is Evergreen Devco's project, estimated 2010. And I know you've seen these drawings before, but this is one of the projects, I think, that is similar to what we're trying to achieve, really looking at density and alternatives in housing, not only for establishing more reasonably priced housing for the workforce, but also for attracting a diverse population.
Excuse me, Holly. Earlier you talked about, you know, targeted markets which were really workforce things, but is there any effort to bring more educational institutions in, which are real essential for attracting the type of corporations that we want to have in place there?
There is. We have two special projects we're working on in the department. And I should probably tell you, I don't think I put a general org chart in here for our department, but the way the department is structured, we have a project manager who deals with industrial office projects, but she also does what we call special projects, which lately we've been really getting special about our special projects. One of those, and I brought this just to pass around, this is a baseball Cactus League marketing piece that we did that was sent to the teams. I think everyone knows that, you know, that's one of our big projects now within Economic Development that we're working on, is the attraction of Cactus League in the stadium. But the other part of that is, the other special project that Corey's been working on is university recruitment. And working very closely with the mayor's office, that's one of his big initiatives, is a higher education institution, and I think really critical to our success, particularly in attracting high-tech-type businesses. You know, I think while there were the questions, why didn't you get Google? Why wasn't Google looking at Goodyear? I think without higher education, without some of the amenities that come with higher education, we're not ready for something like that yet. And we need to be realistic and look at what we can do to build our foundations and our amenities to attract those type of jobs, and certainly university is one of those things.
Thank you.
Google and Goodyear is just too hard to say.
That's probably it. That's probably it. Product improvement, and that's just kind of goes back to what I was saying, we need to concentrate on how we improve ourselves, looking at the city as a product to sell. Water management, you know, we work closely, and Harvey and I have, and we need to give it a better name, I think, but right now it's the strike team. We have this team that comes together on a case-by-case basis, especially the baseball thing, it makes it sound like we're striking out. I don't really like that. But water management, planning and zoning, engineering, we get together, building safety, whenever we have projects, and certainly you're familiar with your whole development policy group and how that process works, whenever a prospect comes to town and they have an immediate need for a meeting with, you know, an audience with the city, we have that team that comes together and really kind of dissects their project and says, what is it that we can do to try to help and support this project? And Harvey in Planning and Zoning's been a really critical part of that, building safety as well, just all of those folks coming together and really taking a look at how we work together to make the project go. Sometimes, you know, companies have unrealistic expectations, and I think only by all of us working together can we kind of say what can and can't be done and try to work with them on trying to get them through the process as quickly as possible and get the best results for the city as well.
Excuse me, one more time, Holly.
Sure.
Have you looked at the models that they use, like in Glendale, for when they need to do something really rapidly? Is that something that we could follow for these types of projects that we're going to see in the future?
We do, and I think everyone has some sense of a rapid-response team, or, you know, they call it something where they come together. And I think we probably need to sharpen our organization about it and make some parameters for how we handle those things. We haven't had a lot of experience of that in the past. We haven't had a lot of industrial interest. And I think we're just coming into our own on having sites ready, and we're going to see more of that as we see more building and more sites become available. Specific area plan for the Employment Corridor I spoke about, that's the developers that are coming together to kind of master-plan that area. And then the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, as you know, is going through a master-planning process. I think they're about a year away from getting their entire master plan done, which includes a second runway and some other amenities that they're looking at for the airport. So that's underway now. Brian Dawkey is the city's representative, so he really, if you want to do a full-out on what's going on at the airport, he'd probably be the best presenter on that for you. Projects for progress, this is just a kind of overview of some of the things that are going on now. Snyder's Handovers, 110,000 square feet currently, they're adding another 90,000 square feet. It's about a $17 million project, and they're going to add 61 new jobs. They have 110 jobs now. So that's a project, we've been working with them a lot, particularly considering they have not only that project going on on the backside of the building, but on the front side of the building, we're looking at the Bullard Interchange and how we can be supportive of them and what's going to be, what that's going to look like in terms of coming near their building and how that's going to affect their operations and impacts and things like that. So we work with Snyder's, we've worked with them a lot in the last few months. Estrella Falls, the Westcore Mall, 300-acre mixed-use, there's a power center and then the mall and mixed-use component. We're doing an improvement district with five developers that are all working together on trying to coordinate infrastructure efforts on that property, on the McDowell Mile, we call it. The property along there, we've got Westcore, Evergreen Devco, WM Grace Companies, Tang Development, and, and a fifth one. And, it'll come to me. Canyon Trails Town Center, Vestarge Project, it's 1.2 million square feet, 303, and Yuma. So that'll be Cotton and Yuma, and I'm sure you know about that, anchored by a target, super-target. And then one of our projects now on Rubbermaid, the Rubbermaid facility, certainly since they left in October, that left that building, which has been highly marketable, 740,000 square feet. We showed it twice yesterday, as a matter of fact. So there's been a lot of interest in the building. It's hard for somebody to say, we want a 740,000-square-foot building. People want 200,000 or 300,000. And so we're looking at working with the owners now on multi-tenant use, you know, what makes sense. You know, one of the problems, one of the challenges is that everybody wants the biggest space that's nearest the rail, and they don't want the other space, and, you know, trying to make everything work and whether that would work for a multi-tenant facility, as well as the surrounding property. They have 200 acres there with Rubbermaid, and what can be done with that property for the highest and best use. And then lastly, as I said, special projects, higher education institution, hopefully, and a spring training complex. And then lastly, I just wanted to kind of finish with the commission's role and our respective role, you know, how both can we serve the citizens of Goodyear and the City Council, whom we, you know, see on a regular basis and become more regularly involved with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and solicit your guidance, too, as Planning and Zoning Commission members? How would you like to see us communicate with you? You know, is it through quarterly meetings and briefings and that kind of thing? You know, I'd welcome your input, and, you know, if not tonight, then whenever, you know, maybe offline, but I'd like to be as resourceful as possible to try to get you the information you need.
Actually, I like the prospect of maybe presenting quarterly of projects that are hot and heavy and coming our way so that we have some sort of insight as to what type of projects they are and what the position is of the city is, so we can help expedite getting things through. So that would be very helpful.
Okay.
I think you've mentioned some of the projects that we'd like to hear about. The airport, of course, is a major one, but it's probably a little premature in terms of hearing about that until they've got a little firmer picture of what's happening, and we'd be happy to see, Brian.
Yeah.
The Employment Corridor, obviously, is an area. I think many of us have had an opportunity to meet with Westcore regarding the mall area. But I think an ongoing kind of idea of what's happening in terms of phasing and that kind of thing would be helpful for us, so that we can anticipate some of the projects that are going to be coming our way, particularly since it's likely that we'll see use permit requests for larger facilities and the power center. And I think they suggested that that probably would develop first rather than the mall. So those are some of the things. And I think as Newland Properties gets their arms around the Estrella Mountain Ranch project, I think we'll find that there are some things that they plan further south where they're really looking at some interesting density that will provide employment opportunities as well.
I think density as well as commercial development, and we meet with Newland monthly at the city, and they are looking at commercial development opportunities at Elliott and Estrella, which I think is exciting, certainly for the folks out at Estrella Mountain Ranch, to look at grocery-anchored power center or something like that along those lines for some opportunities within Estrella Mountain Ranch.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Holly?
See you in August.
See you in August. If there are specific topics, you know, again, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, and appreciate you coming here and let you get on your way so you can go home and put your feet up.
I'll pass this around, too.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. There's a single item, which is case 05-200-00021, Paseo Ridge, Van Leeuwen Farms, request to rezone approximately 121.89 acres, generally located on the northwest corner, 41.89 acres in southeast corner, 80 acres of 183rd and Yuma Road from the agricultural AU District to the single-family R17 District. The applicant is Mira Development LLC, and the staff recommends that the public hearing be continued to May 17 for a regular Planning Commission meeting in May. Is there anyone that would like to pull that from the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair, to approve the consent agenda to the May 17, 2006 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Osborne. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under Old Business, first case is case 05-300-0008, El Pollo Loco Use Permit, a request for the approval of a use permit for El Pollo Loco for a drive-thru restaurant, generally located on .91 acres on the south side of McDowell Road, 700 feet east of Cornerstone Boulevard, in the Palm Valley Cornerstone Shopping Center, in the Palm Valley Cornerstone Planned Area Development, PAD, district, which was continued from our April 5, 2006 Commission meeting. The applicant is WKS Restaurant Corporation. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. As previously mentioned, the applicant is requesting a use permit for convenience use to allow for the development of an El Pollo Loco restaurant with a drive-up window. Subject property highlighted in red on this exhibit is located on the south side of McDowell Road, approximately 900 feet east of Cornerstone Boulevard, with an portion of Lot 15 within the Palm Valley Cornerstone Retail Shopping Center. This is the conceptual site plan that the applicant has submitted to staff, which calls for an approximately 2,800-square-foot building and a 28,000-square-foot parcel. The front of the building faces McDowell Road, and customers that utilize the drive-thru will order from a menu board and squawk box on the south side of the restaurant and then proceed to the east side of the restaurant to pay for and pick up their order. Primary vehicular access to the proposed restaurant is from an internal drive aisle just south of the pad. A total of 26 spaces are required by the zoning ordinance for the restaurant of this size. The proposed El Pollo Loco restaurant will have eight onsite parking spaces, the cross-axis easement and cross-parking agreement that will allow vehicles to utilize the parking lot on the adjacent proposed parcel within Lot 15. To give you a better idea of what Lot 15 will look like as proposed by the applicant, then the El Pollo Loco restaurant pad will be located at the northeast corner. It's part of a separate application. The applicant participates submitting the site plan, where there will be shops, one single shop is going to be located to the south, and the El Pollo Loco restaurant within share of the parking with the adjacent parcel, which is allowed by our zoning ordinance. These are the proposed conceptual building elevations that the applicant has submitted to staff. The proposed building exhibits four-sided architecture and features paint colors and masonary materials that will complement the existing development. Should be noted that this case was initially reviewed, the April 5 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, with a menu board and squawk box located on the north side of the building. At the meeting, the commissioners continue the case until the meeting tonight, April 19, and advise the applicant to redesign the site plans so the menu board and squawk box could be placed behind the restaurant and away from McDowell Road and the residences to the north of the site. Staff feels that the applicant, with the current conceptual site plan and stipulations, has met all the requirements of the city's design guidelines and zoning ordinance and recommends approval of the use permits. This concludes my presentation. Staff, as available, answer any questions you may have. We have the applicant, they also wanted to speak tonight as well.
Any questions for David?
Yeah, I have one, David. Stipulation eight, you talk about the drive-through window hours of operations are strictly limited to 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. Is that what was requested by the applicant, is that their usual business?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, I believe that we saw those hours listed in the original proposal, but I haven't, I believe Dustin may want to recommend a modification to that stipulation.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Mr. Jones, would you like to address this on the?
Dustin Jones with Snell &amp; Wilmer, on behalf of the applicant, WKS Restaurants. Appreciate staff's recommendation approval this evening, and the comments, we support their recommendation. The only modification we would request this evening is that stipulation number eight, with the hours of operations for the drive-through, that it be modified to allow for 10 to midnight, which would be consistent with the commission's decisions in the past with respect to drive-throughs. We also feel that this modification is reasonable, in that the site has been moved farther away from residential homes and the neighbors to the north, and therefore would have even less impact on them by expanding the hours.
Questions of Mr. Jones.
Staff question, please. What was Duainer Schnitzel, again? Just for, if you remember.
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Osborne, I believe, Duainer Schnitzel received approval to operate their drive-through 24 hours a day.
Was it? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones. I have one interest card from Mr. Porter. Speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, and just quickly want to say, on behalf of neighborhood, thank you for sharing the vision of our neighborhood of trying to have a project with the cornerstone being a vibrant, but profitable project for our community, but at the same time being neighborhood-friendly. And I think that their willingness, and I appreciate their willingness, to change the plan, to get that, change the drive-through to the south side of the restaurant, reflects their willingness to go along, and their sharing of this vision, too. So thank you very much for your help on this, and thank you to the staff, too, for the hard work that they put into that, to make it, to get it to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you for coming back. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? I'd like to echo, and I've heard a number of the commissioners, that we're quite pleased with how quickly you've been able to turn this around and reflect the comments that we had, and I, for one, will support the revision in stipulation number eight and move forward. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments?
Sure, I do. We could have been two weeks, we could have had this done two weeks ago. You guys had this plan in the back of your hip. We know it. I'm telling you, we know this. Anyway, this is very good. We like it. We think it's the right way to go, and I'm going to support it, and I also will be supporting the adjustment of your hours. And thank you very much for, and I also want to commend the developer of Lot 15, because you got it right, and the shops look pretty good, too. Thank you.
Other comments?
Not having any. Chairman Horstman, commission members, on that stipulation number six, I think we can probably handle that lot split administratively, and we would like to suggest that that stipulation be struck if the commission would see its way clear to do that.
Oh, okay. Any objection to handling that administratively? Yeah, it's two instead of three.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I see some puzzled looks in the audience. Just that we're in the process of drafting an amendment to our subdivision regulations to allow for a simplified administrative process for lot splits, so that is the reason for that, rather than wasting your time and the council's time in doing these minor lot splits.
And those things generally ended up on the consent agenda, too, didn't they?
Yes.
Further questions or comments? If there's no other comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 05-300-0008, a use permit for El Pollo Loco Drive-Thru Restaurant, with stipulations one through five, stipulation seven, and stipulation eight revised to be 10:00 a.m. to midnight, seven days a week.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second from Mr. Lux. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our next case is case 05-200-0006, Pebble Creek and Virginia Avenue Rezone, a request for approval to rezone 1.89 acres, generally located on the southeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Virginia Avenue, from the Planned Area Development, PAD District, to the General Commercial C2 District. Continued from our March 1, 2006 commission meeting, the applicant is Globe Land Investors LLC. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, before you this evening is the Virginia and Pebble Creek Rezone, which is located at the southeast corner of Virginia and Pebble Creek, adjacent to the Planned Regional Center, Planned Area Development. The applicant is requesting a rezone from the PAD to a straight C2 commercial zoning district. Now, originally, this parcel was included on July 23, 2001, by ordinance number 01-761, to be included as a part of the Planned Regional Center, PAD. And it's my understanding that this was done in an effort to create access via Virginia Road to the Planned Regional Center, so it may be familiar, I believe you all have seen this parcel before. I just would like to indicate real quick that, as we noted earlier, the PAD is located to the east. Directly to the south of the parcel is currently zone C2. I believe at the last commission meeting, y'all saw the parcel directly south of that that is currently in the process of being zoned commercial C2 as well. To the west is the Palm Valley Phase 8, which is the medium-density residential. The applicant, it's the applicant's desire to request this zoning change, sir, in order to be consistent with the parcels to the south. Currently, the desire is to create a business retail center with a Wells Fargo branch being located on that corner. Currently, under site plan review, staff is reviewing the Wells Fargo branch that they propose at that corner. The Wells Fargo Bank is in appropriate use at this corner. We believe that it fits well with the intent of the parcels to the south. And before I get into staff's recommendation on this, I would just like to point out that we do have some stipulation revisions that I placed in front of you this evening, that I would just like to run through with you, if I may. And as I do that, I'm also going to flip the page here and put up the elevations that they've provided for the Wells Fargo Bank as well. We would like to revise stipulation number three to include the verbiage. In the event they include a multi-tenant sign on this property, they would need to submit for city approval a comprehensive sign package. With regards to stipulation number seven, staff is recommending that we amend this stipulation to acknowledge the applicant's responsibility for the traffic signal at the corner of Pebble Creek and Virginia. With regards to stipulation 16, I gave you a brief accounting of why engineering has chosen to recommend deleting this stipulation altogether. And basically, what it comes down to is that the alternative solution, sir, is now being met with the use of a dry well, and stipulation 16 no longer applies to this development. Based on engineering's recommendation, we're also supporting that we delete that stipulation as well. We are recommending, however, one additional stipulation, and that is that any future site plans must be reviewed and approved by the city. And I included that as the last item on the documentation that you have there this evening. Staff is recommending approval of this rezone request, with the revisions to stipulations number three and seven, the deletion of stipulation number 16, and the inclusion of the additional stipulation that you have in front of you this evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that concludes my presentation this evening. I would be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Nathan Anderson, representing the applicant, is here this evening, and I believe he would be available for any questions as well, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions of staff?
Just a couple points of clarification, if you don't mind. This, of course, is a zoning case, but it sounds like, from your presentation, that we may be looking at, this would not be the structure that would go on there, and then there's the possibility of splitting the site up for multi-tenant purposes? Could you kind of clarify that for me? Because it sounds like we're really not looking at what we may go there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, every indication that we have at this point is that although architectural character, colors, design theme may change, every indication that we have right now is that a Wells Fargo Bank is going there. As far as lot splits for other ideas, I sort of have not, that's the first time I've heard that.
Okay, sorry, maybe I misunderstood you. I think, to clarify, the Globe owns some of the other properties in the power center? I guess they may choose to put a multi-tenant sign on the property on the corner with the Wells Fargo Bank. If they do that, it would be representing properties off-site from this rezoning. And that's why, if three or more are proposed for a multi-tenant sign, they'd have to come back in with a sign package. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Gelsner?
I want to ask, I want to follow up on the sign package, because I'm looking at the site detail page number nine in our book, and you have three tenants, and the question I have is, are we, you had talked about the C2 property just to the south of it, would that be, is that what we're trying to combine as one possible industrial park, so all of that property as C2 zoning, and then all three of these, wherever that building is to the south, and those tenants would be on this sign? Or are we going to be seeing people across the RID Canal coming onto the sign?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, excellent question. Two things. One, the revision that we're making to this stipulation is fairly driven by the exhibit that you're seeing here today. Based on the exhibit that they proposed, which was, I think, clearly for an illustration standpoint, that stipulation would be applicable. There's also been discussion about combining the additional applicants, I should say, combining all applicants into one comprehensive sign package that would serve the whole concept, which is in discussion now, and they're trying to actually come up with that proposal. As far as...
Are those applicants the ones to the south?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what we're trying to ascertain, not the ones to the east of the RID Canal.
No, sir, not.
Okay, thank you.
That would not be the case.
It wasn't, no, it's not. It's another piece of property.
Other questions of staff?
One final question. The pallet that we saw for the property to the south, is this facility supposed to sort of match that? And if so, is there some way that we can tie the two together, so that we end up with a consistent project there?
Chairman, Commissioner Bay, again, excellent observation. I can tell you that this project went to development policy this morning, which is where each department reviews it, and we generate comments on their site plan. Certainly, the concern is that we create a design theme that's consistent. You know, it doesn't mean they all have to look alike, but certainly we want something that's consistent, that works for the community, for the city, and for the folks who use it. With the site plan review, and we have three of the site plan reviews concurrently being reviewed right now, we have the vehicle and the mechanism to ensure that consistent theme throughout. I think the fact that the applicants are willing to combine into one sign package that's good for the group is encouraging, and I believe that we can reach that goal of creating that consistency, sir.
Okay, if that can help you at the staff level, I'm fine. I have a couple of questions regarding the site development. Virginia Avenue to the north is, just by an eyeball survey, the ground where this bank is going is three to four feet lower than Virginia Avenue. Is Virginia Avenue going to be the base, and is this site going to be backfilled to come within reasonable limits, so that the driveways aren't steep and that kind of thing? And I see where they're going to use a dry well for retention of runoff, but that also begs the issue of cross-access to the next parcel, which is also at the level that the ground is now. Is that going to be filled, or is there going to be a slight grade going south as it gets to a point where the RID Canal crosses Australia, Pebble Creek Parkway?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, sir, I would be hesitant to answer that question with regards to drainage elevations with, I don't think at this point I could answer that with confidence. I'd be happy to research that with engineering and come to a conclusion on that for you. What I can tell you is that access agreements are in the works with the properties to the south, and certainly that would have to be addressed.
Yeah, I'd just like to make note that I've got concerns about how we're going to make that transition from Virginia Avenue, which is three or four feet higher than the ground where the bank... the ground where the bank is going to be developed and the other shopping center.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, perhaps the applicant can address that, but that's typically something we'd address through the site plan review process and the grading and drainage plan.
And that's all I have. Any other questions for staff? The applicant like to comment on any aspect or fill us in some things that we missed?
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Nathan Anderson. I'm standing in place of Ed Boldt tonight, and let me just address some of the questions, specifically relating to grading and drainage that you asked. It's my understanding that all of the properties to the south of us, all of the C2 parcels there, have been included in a comprehensive grading and drainage plan, and that that area will be backfilled so that it's consistent with Pebble Creek and Virginia. With respect to cross-access, it's my understanding that cross-access instruments have been recorded already for that area. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if there are any.
Questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
I don't have any requests to comment on this project. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this project? Any further questions or comments from the commission? Close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 05200-00026, request to rezon 1.62 acres at the southeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Virginia Avenue with a revised stipulation three, revised stipulation seven, a deleted stipulation sixteen, and additional stipulation thirty-three as written in the handout given to us by staff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second?
I have a second for Mr. DeBrock. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next case is case 05-350-00006, Canyon Trails Large Retail User Special Use Permit. A request for the approval of a special use permit to allow a large retail user with limited outdoor display of nursery stock, lawn furniture, garden supplies, and outdoor accessory items generally located on approximately nineteen point six acres of the Canyon Trails Town Center planned area development. That's the northeast corner of Cotton Lane and Yuma Road. The applicant is Ralph Pugh of Pugh and Lake PLC. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and commission member. This is a special use permit for a large retail user with a limited outdoor display of merchandise. A large retail user is a user with a hundred thousand square feet plus of floor area. This retail user is proposed within the ninety-one acre Canyon Trails Town Center, and this is roughly the twenty-acre site within the larger center. As you can see, surrounding basically to the northwest and east is a future and existing Canyon Trails development, some residential, some commercial. To the south, you have a mix of existing uses and additional residential development within Canyon Trails. The center was an item that you saw about May of last year. That's when the commission recommended approval of the PAD amendment for the overall ninety-one And this is an overhead of just what that conceptual site plan for the center looked like. The drive aisles, access points onto the public roads, other layout of the shops and And this is a view of the preliminary development plan for the large retail user. It's a total of about a hundred eighty-seven thousand square feet, and that includes the garden center to the south of the building, loading docks, trash compactors will be located on the east side. And the parking lot design was from our large retail user ordinance where we looked at designing pods to break up the massive parking that usually accompanies these types of uses. With that, the developer looked at providing some east-west connections, landscape islands and diners within the parking lot. Then this will be proposed to be a twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week operation. As a large retail user, the site plan will require commission review and city council approval, so the commission will get to see the building elevations, or the final building elevations, when they come before you with the files, with the site plan. These are a view of what is proposed with the special use permit, the conceptual elevations to kind of give staff and the commission and council an idea of what might get developed on the site. As a way of comparison, and I will put these up on the screen, staff is asking the commission and council for direction on, for when the final elevations do come in, how do these proposed elevations stack up with what was provided for with the zoning and the design And these were included in the staff report, but I will put these up before you on the screen. This shows the fronts of some of the inline tenants and shops, and those from page twelve.
Steve, is what you're showing us on page twelve and page fifteen, is this from the made case?
Yes, sir, these are from the--
This is when they came and asked for all the signs and the PAD and the whole ball of wax. Got it.
When this document was before summer due last year.
It doesn't look the same.
Does it?
No.
This one, Mr. Chairman, I put up just to show a rendition of what the rear elevations were to look like when it provided the design guidelines. Regarding public notice, we did have a neighborhood meeting. We held that on April sixth. No one from the public attended that meeting. To date, with the advertisements for the neighborhood meeting and this public hearing, staff has not heard or had any public inquiries on this project. Overall, in looking at the review criteria for special use permit, staff does find that the special use will be compatible with the adjacent area. It's proposed in a commercial, regional commercial center with anticipated to be developed with like uses, and also with adherence to certain stipulations that are provided with the PAD amendments and this special use permit and future site plan approval, staff feels that it will also be compatible with the adjacent residential community to the east. Staff is recommending approval subject to the thirteen stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my part of presentation. Staff and Mr. Sean Lake are available for questions.
Questions of staff? Mr. Bay?
Chairman, only one question, Steve. Did I hear you clearly when you said that the actual elevations would come before us for approval prior to, so we don't really have to consider what we're looking at today?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, that is correct. The large retail user ordinance required, a special use permit for a large retail user and also site plan requires commission review and city council approval.
Thank you. I think the staff does want some guidance regarding elevations tonight so that what comes back to us looks like what we want versus what the developer might be thinking about. Ms. Loretano?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, my guidance would be, I wasn't a part of the commission when the original one was presented, but I'm much more favorable towards obviously something like that as opposed to the new and unimproved, I guess, it just seems kind of plain, so it's just like one long tube, so that would be my input to pass along. I would prefer something more along with what was originally prepared, what's up there now as opposed to the new one.
Other questions, comments, the staff? I would echo Ms. Loretano's comments regarding the elevations. If I had looked at them side by side, which I did, I wouldn't necessarily know that they were from the same project. I've got a couple of other issues, but I'm going to take those up with Mr. Lake. Other questions of staff? Other comments on elevations?
I want the rest of the crowd over here. It's not getting my approval the way it's being presented right now. Now, as far as special use permit for a large retail user, that's fine, but when we see the site plan review and the elevations, if it's not markedly improved, don't bother to bring it.
Thank you, Mr. Gelsner. Can I second that? I think I see some agreement here. Okay. Mr. Lake, would you like to join us?
Sean Lake here on behalf of Vestar. I was looking around, I think there's still some blood stains here from the last time I was here, but--
We may pick at some old wounds.
We appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. We appreciate staff and their staff report that they presented this evening. It was nice earlier in the meeting to be recognized as one of the projects for project progress, and so we are very excited about this project with Vestar. We think this is going to be a tremendous asset for the community and will be very well-received by the community. As was pointed out previously, and I think staff touched on it briefly, this is a project that is consistent with your general plan, is, as far as the large retail user, is consistent with what was presented previously. While we haven't identified the tenant specifically, we feel it's going to be a large retail user, and so it's unnamed at this time, you know, but I'm sure you can guess.
There's so many of them.
Yeah, there's so many here. As far as the stipulations that were presented by staff, I wanted to just touch on those. We are in agreement with those, but I wanted to highlight those because I think staff has done an important job of going through your large retail ordinance contained in section four dash two dash seven, which contains conditions of how a large retail user should be reviewed and identified. And your staff has gone through that in detail and prepared conditions of approval, one through three, dealing with site plan and elevation issues that will be brought back before you. They've addressed the airport issue. They've addressed issues in conditions five through six, which were consistent, I think, with other larger retailers that have been presented before this commission before, restricting other deliveries and so forth. So your staff has been consistent with what has been done previously, and I think those are reflected in the stipulations of approval. The condition number eight, one of the issues that was raised more recently that your ordinance was updated dealt with storage containers. You have something in your ordinance that addresses storage containers, and we are agreeing to comply with that new provision of your ordinance. And then conditions nine through thirteen specifically address issues that are raised by your large retail ordinance. And so your staff did a very careful job walking through that ordinance and putting those as conditions for this large retail user. So we think both through the conditions and what was previously presented, we're, it'll be an outstanding project, it's consistent with what we've always said it's going to be here, we think this project merits your recommendation for approval before the council. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that this commission has for me this evening.
Questions of Mr. Lake?
I have a general comment. Last fall, when you came before us with this project, I remember going to bat for you guys for three signs along the future 303 for trying to give you as much leeway and incentive to bring a first-class project to us. And what I'm seeing now is I'm underwhelmed by this, by the elevations especially. This is not special. This is not doing anything for me as a consumer or for me as a member of the commission. And what I said to staff, if you don't bring back a better-looking project and a better-looking tenant, and I have nothing but high regard for the Target Company, since I did live in Minnesota for twelve years and I know what good corporate citizens they are, now they can step up to the plate, and I implore you to tell your client to step up and bring something special to this city. We're not going to accept mediocrity, and this is below mediocrity.
Other questions or comments? Okay. You raised the issue of temporary storage. I screwed up as a commissioner on the Walmart project. Temporary storage that is permitted there under the city ordinance is immediately adjacent to the residences. That gives me real heartburn. In addition, the Target store on Litchfield Road has temporary storage immediately adjacent to a very nice parkway roadway on McDowell Road. Unacceptable. So my question is, where is the temporary storage going to be for this building?
Chairman, the site plan has not even been submitted to the city as of yet. That is certainly something that can be raised. We can even identify an area on the site plan when that process is submitted to the city, works through the planning staff, and comes before this commission and council. Where is it going to be? I can't tell you this evening because we're not at that stage of site planning at this point. However, certainly, we can address that label and area as we work through that on the site planning process at that time.
As we should have done in the projects that I just mentioned--
Hindsight, yes.
--screening wall so that it's not seen landscaped, whatever you've got to do, but customers shouldn't see it, homeowners shouldn't see it, maybe a delivery guy should see it, but nobody else. So whether it's got to be a ten-foot wall with landscaping, do what you've got to do. But if you come in here without a temporary storage area designated with appropriate screening from all concern, you can expect me to propose a stipulation that I will work hard to get implemented that would prohibit temporary storage on the site.
We have taken that, we understand correctly, and we will take that into consideration when we're working out our site.
We'll even give you another sign to show where temporary storage-- We'll even give you another sign to show where temporary storage is.
That's one of those things should be not heard or seen. Other questions or comments for the applicant?
Just one final comment. Like Commissioner Gelsner, I remember when you brought this before us in the fall of last year, and we extended to you the ability to be free-thinking and open-minded about how you brought this project to us because it really is our first time dealing with a large retail center like this. So we still expect of you the same expectations that we had then, and so we still have faith in you, we still trust in you, we still believe in you, but we want to see it in our elevations that you bring back to us.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this project? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of case 05350 dash 00006, consideration of a special use permit for a large retail user to be developed within the 91-acre Canyon Trails Town Center.
I have a motion for recommending approval. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Ms. Loretano. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our next case is 06 dash 2200005, the zoning text amendment, request for approval of an amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, adopted on May 24, 1999, amending Article VII sign regulations and Article IV special uses requiring additional evaluation, non-conforming uses in buildings, to require a use permit for freeway pylon signs, and to establish new development standards and review criteria for such signs. The applicant is the city of Goodyear, open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Chairman Horstman, commission members, good evening. This is a topic that we've touched on before in recent months, most notably in connection with some of the large retail centers that we've had come before you for rezoning. Case in point, we had the rezoning request for Goodyear Center Point project come before you in November 28th of 2005, at which time a freeway pylon sign was included with that PAD in the comprehensive sign package for the project. During consideration of that particular request, we raised the issue about freeway pylon signs and how the community would like to approach that. So the council directed to conduct a work session on the topic. At the work session, the council reviewed several possible alternatives, but at the end, we believe council provided direction to us to prepare amendments to the ordinance generally that would provide for an effective review process for freeway pylon signs, ensure high quality and creativity in the design of the signs, provide flexibility for location, height, and number of signs, and provide incentives for including Goodyear's name in the signs. The issue was touched upon briefly again, or at least became evident again when we reviewed the At Home District in March of this year, at which time a freeway pylon sign was included in that comprehensive sign package, but I'll note that it was approved with that PAD. In the staff report, we provided you with information about the existing freeway pylon signs that are in the community. We've also provided you some additional information of other freeway pylon signs that are not only the ones I mentioned that were recently approved, but ones that are also at least being considered or thought about by prospective developers. And we've also given you some information regarding the regulations from other valley cities. The specifics of this request, what it would do, it would take section, in Section 7 dash 3 of the ordinance, where we have a definition of freeway pylon sign, and we would modify the definition slightly. It removes regulatory language that's contained in the definition, which is more appropriately placed in other sections of the ordinance. What we would also do is take the Section 75D out of the ordinance. That's the section that deals with freeway pylon signs at the present time, and it's included in the sign article of the zoning ordinance that regulates signage. We would replace it with a reference to a new Article 4-2, Section 4210 of the ordinance, which is under the section of the ordinance that deals with use permits and permits requiring additional review. The new Section 4210 then would set forth the language that deals with freeway pylon signs, and it would include a section that clarifies that the authorization of a use permit is a discretionary act, that the individual property owner, by way of zoning, would not have a right to a pylon sign, but that it would be subject to the use permit process and criteria, which would require a finding that the sign is consistent with the purpose and intent of this section in the freeway pylon sign design guidelines. It would also require that proposed freeway sign furthers the interest of the community and is reasonable and necessary to provide business identification and economic vitality. It squarely places the burden of proof that the signage meets the required findings for the use permit on the applicant, and that it be shown that it's consistent with the provision of the ordinance. The principal section of the change is the design guidelines, and we basically replaced a lot of the regulatory language that was in the previous ordinance with these guidelines, which address the size, type, and location of commercial or other developments which freeway sign might be appropriate, sets forth a desired separation distance. It replaces the current height standard in the ordinance with a guideline that the maximum height of the sign be no greater than what's reasonably necessary to be visible. And it also requires that it be demonstrated that the sign is designed to achieve architectural quality and quality of appearance in the sign, as well as with respect to lighting and electronic message boards. So in summary, the principal objective in doing this is to clarify that the right to a sign is through a, is not a, well, to clarify that the zoning does not give a right to a freeway pylon sign, but that a use permit must be requested. It must be requested in conjunction with a comprehensive sign package for a project so that you can see that it reasonably relates to the project, and it requires demonstration of compliance with the design guidelines that are in the ordinance before such a use permit can be approved. We have circulated the proposed ordinance for comments. We have received a couple of clarifying questions from Laura Ortiz with Evergreen Devco, and of course, she's here tonight, and she really wanted to speak to some of those questions. I think for the most part, the issues that she raised were clarifying in nature and that we could certainly try to address those in slight modifications to the ordinance. At this point, rather than delve any deeper into the details of this, I stand for any questions the commission might have.
Questions of staff on the ordinance. Ms. Osborne?
This, you know, really has dealt a lot with the I-10 corridor, and as it is, you've stated in here that we could be seeing as many as 22 signs along that corridor, which I can't think of anywhere else in the metropolitan area that has that many pylon signs. But regardless, one of my concerns, which I'm glad we're going for a special use permit, but I'm kind of concerned about the 303 because that's even a longer distance of mileage, isn't it, that we would be dealing with?
Commissioner Osborne, I mean, obviously it is a longer distance when you consider it from the north end of Goodyear to the south end of Goodyear, something in order of 22 miles as opposed to the six or seven on I-10, and there'd be another six to seven on, or six on the reliever, the State Route 801 that is being called now. But it would apply to all freeways in that respect.
I just wondered if we could be, you know, the I-10, we don't have as much mileage to deal with right now, but I really considered that maybe when we were discussing the 303 that we make it even more harder, like a two-mile distance between, or a mile, mile-and-a-half distance between, you know, that's just my thoughts because I'm just imagining this line of, I know that's way off in the future, but I'm concerned that we're opening up. Cam, what's your thought? Or is that, do you think by beating the special use permit, we're really being able to say no when we want to?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Osborne, the intent is to set it up so that we can say no when we want to say no and say yes when we want to say yes. If the overall goal is to be a lot more restrictive, then obviously introducing a specific standard that says you will not have signs closer than a certain distance, whether it's a half-mile or a mile or mile and a half, is the way to do that. But I also think that what we heard in some of our discussions is that there may be locations or instances where it'd be more appropriate to maybe even have them at a lesser spacing. I think we certainly may have heard something to that effect in the vicinity of the regional center because that's an area where you'd have a large congregation of commercial uses. It is restricted to commercial, industrial, and mixed-use parcels, so, you know, that'll also depend on how much of that is located along the 303.
Okay, I just, it was a concern because we talked more, we were really focusing on the 10, and I was just thinking futuristic about that 303.
Well, no, it's a good observation in that this would apply to all the freeway locations unless we put some language in there to the contrary. Right now, I-10 is kind of the freeway that we can talk about and visualize probably better than we can on future freeways that aren't there yet.
Joe, I've got a, we talked about a couple of projects already that were, there was some discussion regarding a shared pylon sign between one or more projects. I'd like to see some language in the criteria that provides some incentives for multi-project pylon signs, which will have the benefit of reducing the number, at least that would be my goal, is to reduce the number, share the cost, and to provide some flexibility in terms of signage area, in terms of square feet, or some other way of incentivizing the developers to collaborate on, even if they were, instead of asking for three, asked for two among two or three projects. Some way to incentivize developers to look at doing collaborative pylon signs that had the potential of reducing the number.
Chairman Horstman, I certainly understand the intent by trying to combine signs and reduce the overall number. I guess the question I would put forth is, and you've alluded to the fact that it could be a sign area that might be something to be the incentive, I'm trying to think of what other incentives we possibly could create.
Nothing hits me right now, but I will put my thinking cap on, and if we all do that, maybe we'll come up with a couple of more opportunities to provide incentives that might benefit us in that way.
Goodyear can, you know.
Or T-shirt?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Lux?
Joe, I'm curious, is, are you aware of any sort of research or data linking or discussing the effectiveness of freeway pylon signs, just in general, and whether, you know, sites that have them versus sites that do not? Because I noticed in, you know, the spreadsheet that you provided us, you know, not every city in the valley allows for freeway pylon signs.
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Lux, I'm not aware of any specific studies that have been done, other than, you know, anecdotal information that we've received that from the shopping center developers indicating that the major tenants highly desire that exposure, whether it brings in more sales that make it worthwhile, I'm not prepared to do an opinion on that.
I mean, you know, this is certainly not the first time that I've brought up my dislike of freeway pylon signs, nor will it be the last, but, you know, I noticed some of the other cities that don't include, you know, Chandler and Glendale and Scottsdale, and they seem to have very large retail projects located near the freeway, and they don't seem to be having any trouble, you know, attracting some major projects. So I too, you know, am ultimately concerned when I look on this map and see the potential for, you know, a multitude of freeway pylon signs, and I just think that it has the potential to just be really overly garish and wouldn't serve our city very well.
I think another element that, if there's anything out there related to traffic safety, placement of a pylon sign, somebody trying to cut three lanes to hit an exit because the pylon sign's only a quarter of a mile before the exit, those are some things that cause me concern from a traffic standpoint, and I don't know if there's anything out there on that either, but I've certainly seen it over a desert ridge on the 101, people shooting three lanes to get to Tatum because they see the pylon sign just ahead of them, and it's not visible from half-mile back, but it is from a quarter-mile back, and they shoot two lanes to get to Tatum, and...
Just like my wife when she sees a Liz Claiborne outlet. Might have been her.
But that's a concern as well, that the placement relative to the exit and the retail facility is a major element in how effective they can be and how much of a traffic hazard they can be when people try to follow the directions if it's placed too close to the exit.
Well, and you brought up a good point regarding that because I remember when the Autoplex was coming, wanting to change, and they wanted to have the video screen with the cars and, you know, and that was a concern. Where else, you know, people driving, trying to watch the movie, you know, what, and I believe at that time when we asked, because I asked if there had been any kind of traffic studies regarding that, and I don't think there were, so someday that will be an issue. I bet somebody will do it.
Other questions?
If you don't mind, Chairman Horstman. Couple things, Joe. First, I'd like to begin with the exhibit that you provided. Couple things, Joe, first I'd like to begin with the exhibit that you provided us, assess potential freeway pylon signs, regional commercial freeway pylon signs, you might want to spare, but I guess a question I have, does, does this placement of pylon signs reflect the distances and the ordinance that, that you would like to see in the, in the guidelines here?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, that, that exhibit is based on what the current standard is with the half mile spacing.
Okay, so, so then this could.
And, we, no, that's all right, we, I believe we maintain that half mile spacing as a desired minimum guideline. The other thing we introduced, though, was a minimum frontage of 1,000 feet instead of 300 feet as a, as a guideline, thinking that the, the last thing we'd want to see is multiple parcels that are only 300 feet wide, each have its own individual pylon sign. The 1,000 feet of frontage more reasonably relates to the 30 acre size if the, if the parcel is relatively square.
Well, that brings up a point, then, so, we're talking about the, the regional mall, Westport project, and that project isn't even on the freeway, but I've heard them state before us that they plan on having pylon signs on the freeway, so, how, how would they qualify for a sign under that restriction?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, we have seen a submission of a comprehensive sign package related to the power center that included not only the power center, but the regional mall site and a parcel, a 30 acre parcel that they own on the south side of McDowell, adjacent to the freeway, and it is on that parcel that they have tentatively proposed as many as three pylon signs.
They would qualify under that. Okay, then the other thing, and I kind of want to echo Commissioner Osborne's concerns, we are focused pretty much right now on Interstate 10, but at some point, the I-10 reliever's going to be there, and if memory serves me well, those, that particular alignment sort of follows the Gila River corridor in a sense, I guess it's a little, little north of that, but I guess the point, the point is, is that that's a pristine area, and of course, we don't know what the development's going to look like there, but could we look at not having signs in that area so that we could maybe keep that area as free of visual eyesores as possible?
Commissioner Bay, we certainly could entertain putting in the ordinance, any type of restriction along that line that we would, you would see fit. That, the area from the Avondale city limit going west is predominantly in an industrial land use category on the land use plan.
Okay.
And so in all likelihood, and we have seen already one rezoning request to bring property into that zoning category, so that is, placing it in the, an appropriate zoning category to make it eligible for a use permit is likely to occur, up to about Saraval, and then once you get past Saraval, there is some residential, and then there's likely to be a concentration of commercial at Cotton Lane, at an interchange with Cotton Lane. So, that corridor probably does have the potential.
I think I would like to be proactive, quite frankly, rather than reactive, and maybe consider in, in the language that we define, and of course, I'd like to get some concurrence from the commission, that we would define freeway corridors for, or at least areas on freeway corridors where pylon signs would be restricted.
I think that's something that we ought to at, at least throw as an idea to the, to the city council, I, I think there are probably some areas that simply by land use, they're going to be excluded, but we haven't really touched on the, the land uses along the reliever, and I suspect that, well, at some point in time, we need to take a comprehensive look at the land uses through there. I realize that it runs through the employment corridor and, but I'm not sure how important a pylon sign might be to an industrial user versus a retail user. So.
Mr. Gelsner.
I have a couple of technical questions, and then I'd like to comment on some of the comments that my fellow commissioners made. First, first question is, in the proposed ordinance, is there a limit on the number of tenants on the pylon signs? I mean, we've, we've, we have, the current ordinance allows, I believe, four plus the center identification, and we have thrown, you know, allowed as many as seven in a recent case, so that, that's my first question about technical aspects. My second question is, if, if a current pylon sign were to be destroyed by a natural occurrence, or a windstorm, or whatever, would the replacement come under the new ordinance, or would the replacement be the same old stuff? And then I have a couple of other, then I have some, if you could answer those questions, then I have a comment to make.
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, the answer to the first question is, their, the proposed ordinance does not contain any specific number to limit, or limit on the number of tenants. The, I think thinking was that each sign would be just judged on the merits of the number of tenants displayed relative to the type of business that it's advertising, and what could be reasonably read. The, it seems to have been a point of contention in the past where the number four seemed to be arbitrary, so we were continually modifying it. And as to the second question, I believe the, the actual, any voluntary modification of the sign would require, would require an issuance of a use permit. If it were destroyed by a natural disaster, blown over, I believe it would have to be treated under the provisions of the zoning ordinance that deal with non-conforming uses, and if it's destroyed beyond a certain percentage, then it either can, beyond a certain percentage, it cannot be rebuilt unless it's rebuilt in conformance with the ordinance, but it's less than a certain percentage.
So, in essence, Palm Valley Pavilions Two and Palm Valley Pavilions West, which have seen better days, if they were to fall, they would no longer be built in that, in that situation, they would, in configuration, is that correct?
If they, if they blew over and were destroyed, I believe it's more than 50% of its value, then they would not be able to be reconstructed.
Right, okay.
If it were less than 50%, then they would be allowed to be reconstructed.
Okay, now, I, I, as a commissioner, and as a citizen, and as a former businessperson, I believe that commerce is one of the great things about America, and I am abhorrent about my fellow commissioners' positions of banning pylon signs, restricting pylon signs, and restricting any type of advertising that we could be doing here in the city of Goodyear. I think Lady Bird Johnson made a major mistake when she took out billboards along the freeways because I find them exceptionally boring as I drive across the country. And my position on this, and I've told city council, is that we should incentivize the process so that the more, the better the sign, the better the project, the better it is for Goodyear. And the, the idea of restricting the signs and making people come with little signs is not the way to go, and I understand I'm in a minority on that position, but I will be very vocal when it comes to that, and I have told my position, I, I strongly believe that you need to incentivize this process, because if you want to get special and unique and good quality signs, then you need to, to make it worth the business as well to do that, that thing.
On that note, as a business owner, I love to advertise, but there is a point of, of areas looking tacky, and no matter how large and pretty you think the sign is, it's just eye clutter, and with our beautiful mountains surrounding us, we don't need that. And for centuries, businesses have done well without pylon signs, and they will continue to do well without that. Mr. Gelsner. Thank you.
And I'd like to add, Commissioner Gelsner, that we're not always about just business here, we have to consider open spaces and our views as part of the attraction of the valley, so.
I, I really disagree, I mean, we have two, we have two business corridors, the I-10 corridor is, is basically all commercial, and the 303 corridor eventually will become highly commercialized, and I believe that, I'm not saying that we should put a pylon sign on Pebble Creek Parkway or Australia Parkway at the, at the entrance to the mountains, but I am saying, in commercial areas that are commercial, we need to incentivize the process, and, and we will just have to disagree on that.
Yeah, well, we'll work it out, as, as we always do.
Other questions or comments?
One, one more, I'm sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Horstman, Chairman Horstman, there, there was one other thing, and Commissioner Osborne hit on it a little bit, in the actual design guidelines, there's some definitions about the types of signs and what they can and can't do, however, I noticed you do have a, a sort of a catchall in 13 that says that, that that's all out the window, if somebody can come up and prove that this is a good thing. And I guess I was thinking in terms of the Autoplex, where in fact, we did approve some sort of video sign, which I still haven't seen yet, by the way, that was going to help create some excitement and bring more businesses into the auto mall there. So, I guess my question is, is do we, do we need to be that restrictive in our design guidelines to say such things as no scrolling, no video, no anything, or should we say that, that that should be reviewed and presented, reviewed at the staff level and, and maybe presented to commission and council for approval? It's just a question.
I'm thinking of an answer. Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, I, I see where we have suggested that animation and video not be, not be allowed, although continuous traveling and scrolling displays, we said are discouraged as opposed to outright not allowed. I guess our concern was trying to come up with something in that section that dealt with electronic message displays that would be minimally destructive, recognizing that displays of that type could, can be distracting to traffic and potentially cause a traffic safety issue. Again, well, maybe not again, maybe I haven't said this, and I should have said it before, but, I mean, the staff is trying to make an attempt at taking all the input that we have gotten so far from the commission and the council, and craft something that tries to meet what everyone is trying to accomplish, and this is the type of input that we need to find out whether we got close to the mark or way off the mark, and so I certainly appreciate all the comments that, that we get, because we by no means have all the answers to, to craft an ordinance that addresses what everybody wants to see.
Well, if that doesn't change, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Broker.
Yes, Joe, I'm okay with practically everything, but I see one blue dot that causes concern, and that is, eastbound on I-10 before Pebble Creek Parkway is a blue dot right next to Continental Homes, and I remember laboring at night, 11:30 or 12, that we said that pylon would be as far east as could be placed away from the housing development in Continental Homes. That's at Walmart, that's C2, and it's right on the property line, and it should move further east.
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Broker, at least at this point, that is a hypothetical blue dot, not a.
That's a blue dot that's probably never going to happen.
If you pass this, I'd notice it's a blue dot that you may not wish to approve. Maybe one of those blue dots.
It's a blue dot special.
I, I think it was intended to represent just the fact that if there was one on the southeast corner, that the, you could introduce one on that property and meet the half mile spacing. If you were ever to consider it, and you wanted to approve it, that would certainly merit an adjustment of the, of the half mile spacing.
Okay. Anything for you, Mr. Schmitts?
I should have had Mr. Lake represent me.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the proposed ordinance? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Chairman Horstman, just a point of clarification, we've had several comments here about the content of this change to the ordinance, and I wonder, should we pass this as it is today, and without, without really having some continued discussion with input from what we've had here today, and of course, with Joe and staff taking that back to city council for more consideration, so, you know, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with moving forward with this without knowing where we really stand.
Is there something pressing at this point that we need to give you license to take into our, into account our comments in bringing a revised draft to the city council, or would you like to continue and bring it back to, to us at our next meeting? Just to help us understand the context of process.
Chairman Horstman, I, I don't believe, I mean, we have had some applications that have been submitted, but I don't know that they're ripe to come forward yet, that, we'd be looking at a month delay at this point, we don't, have not entertained having a meeting on May 3rd, so the next meeting would be on May 17. I, I don't know that I feel comfortable that I know everything that I need to know in terms of redrafting, I don't know how Harvey feels.
Mr. Commissioner, I think the ones, the signage that we have probably most pressing would be Westport, they have a sign package in and are asking for three pylon signs. Based on our current policy, that wouldn't be allowed. We, we're not recommending that that be considered at this point in time, so I think we were trying to get it in place as soon as possible. We've had an extensive discussion with the city council, and the planning commission, and work sessions on this item, so I'm not clear, as I, I heard about incentives program, and we're hearing, I guess, mixed messages from each side of the dais, one being wanting to be more restrictive, one being to try to promote signage, so I, I guess.
Also, the people that are more restrictive, Harvey.
So we need to have a little.
We've owned the center here.
Maybe we could have a little bit more definition, we, we were not planning on taking this as a draft, this is an ordinance in the council, if it's taken to the council, it would be acted on by the council, so if, if you wish to make any changes, I guess now is the time, or give us a specific direction as to what you want to change.
Well, I think I would, would like to see some work regarding the incentives, and I mentioned one area, one area that we could, we could incentivize is regarding the, the square footage of sign. And I mentioned one area that we could incentivize is regarding the square footage of sign, so that it might be larger to accommodate consolidated signs for multiple projects. Staff or City Council may have some other ideas about how to incentivize. My feeling is that I'm concerned about clutter. These signs are very expensive. Once we put up, if we potentially put up 22 signs, I think the message is going to be lost, and the people who are relying on these signs to develop business for them are going to find that there's, all people are seeing is the forest and no trees. And their message is going to be lost unless they get more motion and things that are going to catch people's eye, which gives me great concern about traffic safety. So that is an element that I'd like to see considered in the criteria is to have a traffic engineering evaluation of the location of the sign from a safety standpoint. I can see a motion sign that may meet our requirements, causing an accident and creating some liability on our part if it results from a sign that we've approved. So I think traffic safety is an element that we need to include in the criteria.
Chairman, Commissioner, what we've designed here is to give the commission and council basically maximum flexibility on signage, whether you want to allow it or not allow it. And in terms of the provision, it's discouraged. If the commission wants to recommend that it not be allowed, animated or oscillating signs or whatever, we could move forward. Right now, of course, there's time on the freeway to read all that. So it's not really a hazard today, but it could be in the future, hopefully. So, and in terms of the height, if you look at the chart of other cities and how we've compared, we're already 600 square feet, we're 80 feet, we're higher than all the other communities. Phoenix is 72. We've exceeded that by 80. And the reason we did that is because we have elevated freeway through the community. So we wanted to make sure that we don't want to have freeway pylon signs that are not, they are effective with the freeway we have. So we allowed it higher and particularly larger. So we're not limiting the number of tenants. So I think right now, the way it's designed, either we go more restrictive and have some specific criteria you want, or we keep it loose and with maximum flexibility the way it is. I guess that's, just as a general rule, which way do you want to go? Do you want to have specific criteria and tie your hands a little bit? Or do you want to allow yourself flexibility, total flexibility? I think that's one of the questions to ask yourself.
I guess I'm personally comfortable with the flexibility. However, even though the preamble says we want to change people's mindset that this is a by right process, it sure sounds like every property owner along I-10 is approaching this as a by right issue. And I guess that in order to get by that and to convince the development community that we're serious, we probably do need the flexibility. But I think the City Council needs to make a statement that this is not by right. If they dump them, anything that we say is really going to be from a mood issue regarding the expectations that pylon signs are going to be approved, and they recommend against, but if the City Council feels in the opposite direction on a specific sign, then our influence is going to be minimal. So I'd like to hear them reinforce that statement that pylon signs are not by right. Chairman Horstman, Mr. Broker.
Is it possible, Dan? Because I would be comfortable with moving forward with the ordinance as it is, but I think it would behoove us as a body to get with City Council and maybe talk about other issues and other concerns, such as being restrictive in some areas, maybe defining, a little more defining about what we want to see here in the near future in terms of pylon signs. And so with that, because we have so many freeways yet to come, I think we really need to start thinking about what the impact is, because we clearly today talk about excessiveness along the I-10. And if we are proactive and think about, how do we really want to see good year in the future, then I think it should be a point of discussion that we can then define what, how do we want to see our corridors in the future through a work session of some sort? So I would be comfortable with passing the ordinance and would like to see staff maybe set up a session where they would study the future corridors and maybe do some sort of analysis and comparison in terms of where signs would be placed based on current zoning.
I think my sense is that we want to move this along because there are some things pending. I think when the City Council has this on their agenda, if there are commissioners that have specific concerns, certainly the opportunity to testify before the City Council and to communicate with members of the City Council prior to their consideration. I think many of them read the minutes of our deliberations, and I think the comments here will certainly be heard by many of them, and I think we can reinforce that through individual communication as well. So we've had a work session on the topic. I think we thrashed it pretty well. I agree with you that there are some issues that have kind of evolved as we've had the discussion. But I think in the interest of moving things along, I'd suggest that we act on the draft ordinance that's before us and to take the opportunity to contact council members or appear before the council when they take it up. It's certainly an opportunity to generate some discussion before the City Council. If that's agreeable?
Sure.
You and I have thrashed this thing today? Okay. We are still ready for commission action. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval that we recommend zoning text amendment 062200005 to the City Council.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from Ms. Laura Condon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Mr. Lox, folks, no. Motion is approved.
I wish that we would not allow...
No power.
Although I do appreciate that we're, you know, moving from entitlement to a discretionary.
Thank you. Our next case is case 06-300-00001, Comfort Suites Use Permit. Request for the approval of a use permit for a three-story hotel generally located on 2.396 acres in the Parkway Village Commercial Center at the southwest corner of Australia Parkway and Roosevelt Street in the general commercial C2 District and the City Center Gateway Overlay District. The applicant is Scott Cuttinen of PK Architects. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Members, as you just introduced, this is the use permit for the Parkway Village Center site, lot 13. The site is for the Comfort Suites Hotel. The property is located at the southwest corner of Australia Parkway and Roosevelt Street. It's right across the street from the Walmart Shopping Center. The reason a use permit is being requested is because the property is located within the City Center Gateway Overlay District, which has that requirement. The property is currently surrounded by other commercial properties to the south, multifamily to the west, the Walmart site to the north, and the Australia Commons proposed mixed-use development that you saw briefly on a slide in economic development earlier this evening. The request, as noted, is for a Comfort Suites Hotel, would contain approximately 84, or would have 84 guest rooms, 2,200 square feet of meeting space, recreation facilities, exercise room, outdoor swimming pool, and spa, and restaurant. The property is located in the southerly portion of the Parkway Village site. Just to kind of orient yourselves to it. Here is Roosevelt, and here's Australia Parkway. It is approximately 300 feet back from Australia Parkway. The preliminary site plan's been submitted that the hotel would be configured on the site and where the parking would be relocated around the hotel. Staff has reviewed it and found it to be substantially in compliance with the requirements of the ordinance. We held a alternate notification process for citizen review. No comments were received regarding this proposed development. Staff has recommended approval of the use permit, subject to two stipulations noted on your agenda in the agenda packet. I would like to add a third stipulation, that is the standard site plan stipulation, similar to the one that was mentioned by Mr. Williams earlier this evening, that the approval of the use permit does not specifically approve the site plan, it's only conceptual in nature, it is still subject to full site plan review. It's kind of our way of saying that you're almost there, but not quite. That concludes my presentation, and I believe Mr. Cuttinen is here representing the hotel.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Chairman, just one question. So under the ordinance, the overlay district, then would the site plan, like the vesta project, still come before us, the elevation plan, or is that still relegated to staff for review?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, this, the site plan review and elevation review is only on the large retail user. That requirement is not in the city center overlay district, so this would not come back?
Okay, then I'm definitely in agreement with the third amendment.
Other questions of staff? Okay, Mr. Cuttinen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to thank staff for the nice presentation of the project. Couple things I'd like to clarify is...
Do identify yourself for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Scott Cuttinen, I'm with PK Architects. Just a couple of clarifications to what was in the staff report. The square footage of the hotel is closer to 65,000 square feet. It's listed as 146,000 square feet.
Whoops.
Also, it stated that the hotel will have a restaurant. It will have a hot breakfast for the guests, but it's not intended that the public will enter the hotel. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from Mr. Lox.
Just a quick, I mean, did you guys have any discussion or interest in going higher, more than three stories? Or was the project always just limited to three stories?
That's not something we ever discussed. The target was approximately 80, 84 guest rooms, and we were able to achieve that in a three-story building. Forty-eight feet to the highest point.
Other questions for the... I have one that's by way of clarification. On the proposed site plan, Pool in the lower left-hand corner says Pool by Others. When you indicate that, you mean other party is going to design and build that for the hotel?
That's correct. It's a separate permit from the permit for the hotel.
I was just making sure that that wasn't going to be some sort of public facility theme park. I didn't think so. The other comment that I would like to offer, and I think Mr. Gilzer's got some more specific suggestions, the elevations are kind of underwhelming as well. And I'll leave it at that, because I know he has some more specific examples to show you.
With your permission, I'd like to use Elmo.
Absolutely.
This is the first time I see the commission. I have lobbied for this site to be higher than three stories since I first found out that it was going to be a hotel, that there was a hotel site here. And as a commissioner, with the potential of a city center to the south of us, with the potential of a baseball stadium to the south of this, I just believe that what we are seeing currently is small, the idea of small thinking. And I would encourage the commission to seriously consider that. When I first heard about this project, I mistakenly thought that it was a country inns and suites, and I remember seeing, this is the country inns and suites at the corner of I-17 and 101 up in Deer Valley, and I saw this four-story building, and I said, oh, okay, they can build four-story buildings, and we can, you know, move on with that. And doing further research, I obviously figured out it's wrong brand, different style. However, I did look at four other Comfort Suites that are in the city, and let me zoom in here. Okay. This is the Comfort Inn Suites located up at the Peoria Stadium, and this is what, you know, this looks pretty good. The architecture is nice, it's inspiring, it's right near a ballpark. It has some, it has some street appeal. This is the Comfort Suites in Scottsdale, and it has a southwest appeal to it. It also has street appeal. It seems to, you know, talk to Scottsdale and its Wild West dates. This picture that I'm going to show you right now, this is the Comfort Inn Suites at the airport, or the Comfort Suites at the airport. Notice the architecture, the parapets, the balconies, the port, as Ed Bull would say, the port de gégé, which I, anyway, the portago. The entrance to the hotel is very, has a lot of street appeal, et cetera. This is the Comfort Inn Suite, the Comfort Suites at Metro. Again, notice the entrance to the hotel, the... Again, notice the entrance to the hotel, the use of color, very inspirational. And so, you know, based on what I've shown you, and the fact that I think this hotel is too small for the location, I am going to be voting against this use permit.
Can we ask questions of the commissioner?
Sure. No, just, I've never seen a commissioner present to us before. That was pretty good.
I appreciate the fact that Gary's done some homework, legwork, that is very helpful. One of the comments that we frequently get from retailers that have moved into Goodyear, and some of them have some history here, is, darn, we built too small. And I can point to restaurants and hard goods retailers that are telling us that they should have built a store that was twice the size. They should have known, based on demographics, that this was going to be a hot market. They built the Chili's. The day they opened, they knew that it was too small. They immediately started plans on the restaurant next door. Best Buy has one of the highest, if not the highest, sales per square foot of any store in their system. They wished that they had a store that was twice the size and would be able to expand their, expand their product offering. I'm going to agree with Mr. Gelsner. We're thinking too small here. We really are. And with all that is planned for the future of the city, there really aren't that many hotels. There's no hotel in this corridor. I think you're just missing the boat, both in terms of architectural treatment. I would look for a fifty percent increase in the number of rooms. Increase the height to four or five stories so that you have a smaller footprint, you can offer more amenities on-site. I realize that you've got a brand picked out within the Comfort Inn family. You might want to relook at your product offering and offer something that's the next step up in terms of the product and the amenities that are available. I'm just underwhelmed with the project, the architecture, and the lack of vision, and I too am going to vote against the use permit. Ms. Laura Tana.
I have a couple of questions. Is this, when you were talking about amenities, I brought up something. Is this type of hotel going to have any sort of Comforts facilities or anything attached to it or in it or...
It will have a conference room. It's approximately twenty-two hundred square feet. Also, Mr. Chairman, with regard to your comments, I'm not in a position to really comment on what is feasible. I'm here as the architect, representing what, you know, my client has asked me to put together. As far as the exterior elevations for the project, we were given a theme for the overall development, for the Parkway Village development, and the characteristics, the colors, the style of architecture that you see is in tune with the intent of the overall development.
I have another question. What is the, for the Comfort Inn Suites, what is the standard hotel rooms that you build per hotel? What is the average size for that product?
For a Comfort Suites, the guest rooms are typically about twelve-foot wide by...
The number for, you said this was going to be eighty-four. Is that pretty much standard?
Yes, that's pretty much standard in terms of number.
What would be the next step up that the other two commissioners and the chairman was asking about?
Well, I don't know that there's a limit necessarily in size, but typically for the mid-market hotel, such as a Comfort Suites, they usually range from eighty to a hundred guest rooms.
Other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Chairman Horseman, I know I'm going to get beat up, but I'm going to say this. I'd like to move for approval of case zero six, dash three zero zero, dash zero 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 one, special use request to build the Comfort Inn Suites. Is that correct?
Yep. Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Excuse me. And include the third stipulation.
With you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Gelsner seconds the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Roll call.
Let's get a roll call.
Ms. Laura Tana.
Do you want my reason too?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I don't have a problem. I'm on the City Center Committee as well, and that's going to be twenty to thirty years out before that's built out. So even though we're growing greatly, there's room for more than one hotel here, and I think we need something now, rather than overbuild and have a lot of empty hotel rooms for the future. With regard to the architecture, I see a variety of colors. I appreciate Commissioner Gelsner's bringing those, several pictures of Comfort Inns throughout the valley, but I actually find this a lot more appealing than the one in Metro Center he showed us, the white with the green roof that seemed rather plain. So I don't have a problem with what you're building, and I think it's a good start. And then maybe as we grow, then we'll have some place for the next product line.
So that was a yea.
That was a yea. I was...
Oh, okay. Mr. Bay.
I too am in favor of this project. I believe that, other than the architectural treatments, I would be fine with that, and I was going to hope that staff with the third stipulation would assure that we got a quality product out of that. So I'm in favor.
Mr. DeBrock?
I voted no. But I could support a four-stories, one hundred and twelve rooms. That'd be twenty-eight, twenty-eight per floor, and add a fourth floor at a height of, to accommodate the fourth floor.
Thank you. Chairman voted nay for the reasons stated earlier. Ms. Osborne.
I voted nay. I actually echo Mr. DeBrock's. I believe that a fourth floor would be fine. The architecture is not that bad, but I do, I could support a fourth floor.
Mr. Gelsner.
I vote nay. I echo Mr. DeBrock's comments, and you heard my comments at the podium.
Mr. Lox.
I also voted no. Wish it were bigger.
So the motion fails on a vote of five-two. Take a five-minute break? Yes, let's take five. Keep Kevin here as long as this possible. I can't move down.
Chairman, I thought I'd done that once before. Didn't I make a presentation as a commissioner before?
No.
I don't recall.
Okay.
It was well received.
Got the point.
Our next case is case 05-500-00021, Talavertia Estates preliminary plat, a request for the approval of the preliminary plat for Talavertia Estates subdividing 253.84 acres into 394 single-family residential lots generally located at the southeast corner of Camelback Road and Citrus Road in the Talavertia Planned Area Development District. The applicant is Kevin Kugler of RBF Consulting. Mr. Tavasolo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the benefit of the folks viewing this on the web, I'll begin, we're going to continue with the site as some of you may already know very intimately. The Talavertia Estates, the site's located at the southeast corner of Camelback Road and Citrus Road, as you can see, about 254 acres. And incidentally, the eastern boundary is the 65 DNL like for Luke Air Force Base. Russell Ranch is located diagonally to the northwest. That's within the county jurisdiction. And Sadea, another master plan development directly to the west. And they have received their entitlements going all the way through the final plat Looking at the cover sheet, and I'll try to fit as much as I can here, but this is the cover sheet of the plat submittal. As I mentioned, it's about 254, 255 acres or so. And incidentally, this property here at the media corner is not within this plating area. It's about 11 or 12 acres. And what the applicant is proposing with this plat submittal, and incidentally, some of you very well know, this is the third submittal coming before you. The preliminary PAD was approved last summer. The final PAD is due up before the city council on May 8th. And like I mentioned, they have submitted a preliminary plat for your consideration consisting of 393 lots. Each lot with dimensions of 110 by 140 feet, or about 15,400 square feet. It will consist of 49 acres of open space, or about 20% of the development. And there will be three active open space areas. And if you'd like, I can refer back to the zoning map with the previous final PAD submittal, but they would be located in these three sites, those active open space areas. The development will consist of three phases. Phase one will actually consist of the model home complex located at the extreme southwest corner of the development, right here, labeled as Phase 1A. It will consist of one-third of the lots of the entire development, and it will include the half-street improvements along Citrus Road, and that is actually, construction is going on as we speak. Phase two will consist of the remaining lots to the south of the Collector Road, and it will also consist of the balance of the Collector Road. And phase three will ultimately be the remaining lots on the north side. So in the end, you'll have a development with a density of about 1.59 acres that is consistent with the PAD that was approved, or the, I should say, the recommended for approval. And therefore, staff is recommending approval contingent on the 43 stipulation because it complies with the graduated density concept suggested by Luke Air Force Base, the general plan, and the final PAD, and it's 100% pylon sign free. The, I should mention that one of the stipulations, if you look at stipulation number 19, we're suggesting a minor revision to 19C. If you, if you read that stipulation all the way through, you might find it to be a little bit redundant, and staff's on board with the applicant to delete the very last sentence of stipulation 19C. With that, I'll conclude my comments, and welcome your questions.
For information's sake, Mr. Tavasolo, can you put that back up on the screen?
Sure.
And would you back up just, back out just a little bit?
Back out.
And would you point out the northeast corner of Cotton Lane and Camelback Road?
Cotton Lane, this is the northeast corner of Cotton Lane and Camelback. This is the Loop 303 line.
That's where the F-16 went down. Just a point of information regarding what we've done in terms of planning for these eventualities. Turned out to be a field full of spinach or broccoli. If that plane had gone another half-mile, it would still be in the, within the ACUS line, within the ACUS lines, but it would be outside the crash potential zone. And what exactly occurred is not known, but that, it appears that when the pilot threw on his afterburner, it cooked the engine, and down he went. Fortunately, he was able to point the aircraft into a field and bail out himself, and he's fine. But, you know, we talked about these eventualities in kind of abstract terms as we planned the land use around here. That was a reality. And I was not happy that it was that location, but on retrospect, I'm glad it wasn't somewhere else, and that the pilot was okay. But I just want to point that out because there was a lot of discussion regarding the general plan and that corridor. And I'm certainly happy that we saw the wisdom to do the right thing in terms of planning that corridor. And with that, I'll leave that alone. Other questions of staff? Chairman Horson? Mr. Bay?
Just a quick run-by on stipulation 19C. The way that it reads, it says that there's no more than three two-story homes, and then that final sentence says if there are two two-story homes that are located side by side, then they must be followed by a single, at least one single-story homes, which implies that there can only be two two-story homes there, next to one another. So are you proposing that you scratch the sentence that's conflicting that says that there's two stor-, only two two-story homes are allowed in favor of three two-story homes side by side?
Correct. We're suggesting that the last sentence be deleted, and in so doing, that would also be consistent with the stipulation that was with the, included with the zoning, which is almost identical to what you're seeing before you minus that last sentence.
All right. I was just trying to understand the mindset behind, did you really want two, or did you want three? So, and then the last question I had is, I heard you say something about graduated densities, because it's right along the 65 DNL. And I guess it's sort of difficult to see from the site plan how that's really applied. Some lots appear to be smaller around the 65 DNL on the site plan, and larger lots appear to be further west. Could you maybe help me see how that works?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I can address this, to the best of my knowledge, the graduated density concept doesn't necessarily, it's more contextual in nature, meaning that, for example, if you look at the development that's proposed across the street to the west, the Sadea Development, that is in a higher density.
Okay.
So moving further to the west, getting into this development.
That's fine. I just didn't see it here, that's why.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lor.
I was just wondering, were there any, like, playgrounds or tot lots or anything in these open spaces? I didn't notice that in the stipulations, but I'd been a little tired, so I could have missed it. Or are they just going to be grass retention areas?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what I'm showing here for you is the final PAD document that was created in February, recommended by the Commission. And here they have labeled at least, I see two tot lots for these two parcels.
Okay, that was.
And obviously, you can't read it, but.
Yeah. Ask question if they're there.
But they are in fact labeled here. There's a basketball facility, and I believe a sand volleyball court located here as well. As for, to address your question, as far as playground facilities are concerned, it will consist of at least these two tot lots.
Any comments from the applicant? Thank you, Chairman Horson, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Andy Moore. My address is 3101 North Central, Phoenix. I'm here on behalf of Beazer Homes. Just to follow up on the questions that you all had on the presentation from staff. First of all, thanks, thanks to staff, they worked with us. An opportunity came up sort of near the very last point that this could have gotten on the agenda, and we were able to get it on the agenda, and we're very thankful for them working with us. And that's, I think, how the second sentence on stipulation 19C got in there. It's actually the old stipulation. You guys used to actually approve that stipulation on zoning cases. And several years ago, we met with planning, said, the second sentence says you can only do two together, you know, and they've changed that, but I suspect it's still in the computer somewhere. And in our haste to get it on, staff didn't have time to get all the kinks out. So we do appreciate them working with us to get the schedule going. With respect to just the couple of issues, as far as tot lots and amenities, there is it in our final PAD that you've recommended for approval. Again, it's difficult to see, but there's details of what we're including, amenities. There's going to be the three parks, there's going to be basketball, volleyball, soccer, tot lots, barbecue areas, bench seating, remadas, trash, all the type of things that we're seeing in every one of the developments that have come through the city. You guys do require and expect a lot, and Beazer is providing that in this agreement. With respect to the graduated density concept, again, I think that question might have been answered, but the graduated density, if you recall, involves three different density categories, starting at the 65 LDN. This is the 65 LDN, right around the side of our property. And the first half-mile is the first category. Of course, that goes throughout our property. And the first category is zero to two dwelling units per acre. We came in at 1.59 or 5.6 dwelling units per acre. So we, the idea is, again, you know, your comment, Mr. Bay, was that some of the lots look smaller, and maybe they look larger over here. The entire category is what we look at, comment on those small lots. Our smallest lot is about 1500, or 15,000 square feet. So because of the graduated density, because we are right up against the 65 LDN, you're seeing 393 lots that are going to be, each of them, you know, getting near a third of an acre. That's our smallest lot. Some of the lots are bigger, all the lots that back up to the future, whatever this is going to be. It's agriculture now. It's not rezoned. Could be commercial, probably be commercial, are 30 feet deeper, each one of them, than the 110 by 140. So these are 110 by 170. These lots here that back up to the major thoroughfare in our property are another 20 feet deeper, so that we're adding on some depth, 10 or 20 feet deeper. So we do have some really good lot sizes. When you look at the plan, it looks like some smaller lots, but you compare it to what's even next door, and you'll see that they're pretty generous, I think. And again, just on that Luke Air Force Base issue, I agree with the chairman that, you know, fortunately, that situation ended up as it did, and it wasn't worse. We, as you all know, many of you are involved in the general planning process, and we all agonized over how exactly to determine where to allow housing at higher densities and less. We had many issues, including that everybody wanted to see Luke Air Force Base prosper and continue, and at the same time, there's a lot of landowners who've been farming their land for generations, and we also didn't want to say to them just randomly, you don't get to sell your land. And so there were a lot of compromises, and a lot of working out where exactly would we feel safe drawing the line. And we, of course, trust that we've made a good decision here, and we expect that accidents will happen, but we always hope when they do, there'll be opportunities for life to be preserved, and we really, the only thing we could say is planes can go down anywhere, so let's just not develop anywhere near Luke. And that basically brings lawsuits that gets rid of Luke. And so, that unfortunate situation, but fortunately, it didn't get worse. With that, you've already seen this, this will be your third time that you've seen this plan. I think you've liked it in the past. We are bringing in a product that we think will be wonderful. We're looking forward to being in this part of town. Beazer's excited about this. We're working very closely with Sadea, who is our neighbor to the west, in coming into agreements. They will be providing many of the fire, the schools, and so we will be paying them cash for our participation in that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one question. I'm sorry, I dismissed that last part you just said, and you may have answered this question for me before. Regarding the schools, I know that you're not having the school sites, but.
Parents' Day.
There's an, oh, go ahead.
Right. I know, they're not having, right. But are you participating in the?
Yes.
Okay. And how much is that per household?
You know, I don't recall, and I did answer this question for you.
Yeah.
Let me see if, we have signed our agreements with the school districts.
Oh, I didn't have any in here, so.
Yeah, I don't recall the numbers.
It was in the final.
Yeah. In the final P.
Just making sure to get past me by any chance.
No, I think, I think we've asked this before, and I apologize that I'm not prepared. The school districts didn't want to put schools on this property since they'd already asked for an elementary school in Sadea, and there'll be a high school in the Brado, a project that these students will be attending, and we are paying our share of the compact.
Okay. That's just sort of double checking.
Other questions, Mr. Moore? Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this case? Hearing none. Cool. Entertained, commissioned, action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 05-200-00024, approval of the preliminary plat for Talavertia Estates.
Have a motion. Mr. Bay is the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oh, I apologize, and removing the last line, I forgot to say that.
The last sentence. 19C, 125 is 19C.
All right, our last case of the evening, but thank you. Case 05-500-00015, Palm Valley Village preliminary plat, a request for the approval of preliminary plat for Palm Valley Village subdividing 13.48 acres into seven commercial lots generally located at the northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Indian School Road within Phase 3A of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District. The applicant is Suncor Development Company.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission.
Mr. Bay.
Before I begin, I'd like to bring to your attention that the applicant is not in attendance tonight. So therefore, if you have any questions of the applicant, you may want to consider continuing the case at that point. As previously mentioned, Suncor Development Company is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for Palm Valley Village that will subdivide approximately 13 and a half acres into seven commercial lots. Subject property is highlighted in black on this exhibit, and is generally located at the northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Indian School Road within Phase 3A of the Palm Valley Master Plan. As you may already know, Palm Valley Village is a master-designed neighborhood shopping center that will include approximately 88,000 square feet of commercial space. The zoning for the center is mixed-use commercial and is subject to the city's general commercial The exhibit you're now seeing is the proposed Palm Valley Village preliminary plat. At the present time, only the Walmart Neighborhood Market, which is located on Lot 2, has been developed. The rest of the site has not seen any construction to this point. Currently, staff has received site plan applications for World Savings Bank on Lot 6. Staff has also received a use permit application for Burger King on Lot 4. On Lot 3, on lots 3, 5, and 7, staff has received site plan applications, and the site plan for Lot 3 and Lot 5 have been approved by staff. We anticipate that the applicant will submit construction plans very soon. In the future, staff also anticipates that Suncor will submit, or Walmart rather, rather, Walmart will submit a fueling station with frontage on Indian School Road in the southern part of Walmart parcel in Lot 2. Suncor will provide a cross-access agreement throughout the center for lots that do not have an access point on Litchfield Road or McDowell Road, and there are access points on Indian School Road with the stoplight that connects to the shopping center there. There's also an access point on Litchfield Road. Overall, the proposed Palm Valley Phase 9 preliminary plat is consistent with the Palm Valley Master Plan, Palm Valley Village Development Guidelines, and the city's general plan. The lots, which range in size from 0.63 acres to just over 6 acres, and lot configurations are consistent with the requirements of the city's subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance. So based on these findings, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for Palm Valley Village, and is available for any questions.
Questions for David? I have one question, David. The subdivided center on Dyserd, the northwest corner of Dyserd and McDowell, we did a subdivided plan rather than a. plan rather than a PAD. We ended up with kind of a jumble. What are we doing with this that will avoid some of the problems that we had with that project?
David may not have the history on that one, that corner. I lost hair on that corner. Pretty familiar with that corner. We did not have design guidelines on that particular corner, northwest corner of Dyserd and McDowell. We do have design guidelines here, so it was, SunCor intentionally did piecemeal development there. But in this particular case, they do have design guidelines, the sign package, and they comply with the design you see at the Walmart Neighborhoods Market, so that's the, that's the main difference.
The other element, other than signs and so forth, that became a chewy issue was, is circulation in that project. It appears that the way the parcels are spaced, we've kind of dealt with that, but that was a, that was a concern, the way the buildings were laid out in the parking lots and the travel lanes. It got, it got pretty crazy, and I guess, you know, I haven't heard too much about Starbucks building that drive-through store that they proposed over there, but maybe they, they will eventually, but that was, that was some of the concerns that I had over there was, circulation was, was a bit.
In the case.
Not quite appropriate for the site.
One of the other issues was in the case of the northwest corner of McDowell and Dyserd, my recollection is that we did the plat earlier than rather than later, and then they started subdividing even more of some of the lots and trying to put more buildings on. So we had already gotten some buildings, and then they platted it, and then they tried to squeeze other drive-throughs on there that weren't, we didn't know about later down the road. In this particular case, I believe we've seen conceptual layouts of these lots. Is that correct, David? I believe. So, and the Commission must approve the, for instance, the Burger King, the drive-throughs. So if the additional drive-throughs will need to be approved by the Commission and Council.
Thank you. Other questions of staff?
Quick question. Lot 1, is that going to be office or shops or something like that? That's in the upper northwest corner where the, where it backs on the road, I think.
That's the one lot we haven't seen anything on, but they're talking to us about daycare. And we should be safe, there's no golf course nearby.
And there's exactly Starbucks, right? You know, 100 feet from there.
Well, yeah, they have the Burger.
Oh, yeah, same.
Yeah, stationed with Burger King.
Any other questions of staff? I don't see anyone that wants to speak on this case.
Where's the applicant?
Call the question.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of case 05-500-00015, Palm Valley Village Preliminary Platt, with 22 stipulations as presented.
Thank you. Second.
You second.
Ms. Laura Tano seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
He's a dangerous president. Allow the applicant to show up.
I'll get Jay on the phone. Do you want to say anything? Because you're the only one from the public here. Staff communication.
Mr. Chairman, it's funny, we talk about public comments. One of the things I'd like to propose, and something the City Council recently did with their agenda, I'd like to, with your approval, change the format somewhat of our agenda, just as a suggestion, we can talk about it, is to move public comment at the front of the meeting rather than at the back of the meeting. Not that we don't like to hear from Margaret, but we, you know, it gives people enough, when they're all here, give them an opportunity to speak, and if there's, it just seems like that's more in keeping with the spirit of open meetings and public comment.
Any other comments?
That's okay.
But I, but I think that's a good idea to move it up front.
Okay. How does, I know the Council words that a little bit differently.
Yeah, they, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, they, what the issue is, is that they can be heard, but they can't make a decision, or they can't really respond to an app, or a speaker. Basically, they're taking the information, they need to get back with them at a later time. So they just listen and go.
Can, can.
We could do the same.
I think that's probably the appropriate thing to do.
Right. Technically, you're not supposed to discuss.
Non-agenda.
A non-agenda item, and by them bringing up an issue and talking about it, you're violating open meetings law.
So we just take it under advisement?
Right, and we get back with the individual.
Anything else?
No.
Just a regular meeting on the third Wednesday.
It'll probably be relatively slow, but I think it's still manageable.
Okay. Anything further?
No, no, sir.
Anything further from the Commission? Entertain a motion, do a adjourn.
I'll second.